Well, good evening, everybody. Do we have a call? Yeah, we do. Okay. Welcome to the May sixth New This isn't the Newark Urban Renewal Agency. City Council Business Session. I now call the meeting order. Shall we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Counselor Olson?
Here.
And Counselor Carmen is excused.
Well, the first item on our agenda is, of course, Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will, are you ready for the city manager's report?
Yes, sir, I am. And this is the city manager's report of monthly events for April of 2024. News slide, please. Public Works news. On the bypass Phase Two A, construction has started south of Oregon eighteen and Oregon two nineteen intersection, but has, as you know, been delayed up to a year. Construction is hoped to start in the summer of this year, and it is hoped that that phase will end in 2026. ODOT plans to close the bypass when road construction begins, but the date is to be decided. ODOT will be relocating one city water line that is in conflict with the ODOT improvements at no cost to the city. The bidlet date for Phase Two A has been revised to June twenty seven, twenty twenty four. And of course, Russ and the team will let all residents know when we think things are finally about to start. News, news slide, please. House Bill two thousand and one Waterline Projects. Design is in progress, with the first construction phase anticipated to be advertised in the fall of 2024. Additional design and construction phases will continue beyond twenty four, twenty five, and into future budget years. Utility conflict potholing prior to design completion has occurred in March, and the results from the utility conflict potholing, when available, will be incorporated into the ongoing work. And let's try the clicker. Worst Roads Survey. To most effectively direct puff and other paving dollars, the city manager will soon be running a worst roads survey. This will go to city council, it will go to traffic safety commissioners, and it will go to the police patrol division. The results of this will be combined with our existing engineering data to direct our road repairs dollars most effectively next financial year. And recent smashing maintenance work includes hydrants maintained ten, water mains flushed four hundred and eighty-five feet, valves exercised ten. And that's a lot of exercise to exercise those valves. Water meter services, that was a punny worthy of the molly there. Water meter services, a hundred and forty-five jobs, connects, disconnects, and leak checks, water meter maintenance eighty, new meters installed seven, and sweeping debris, twelve cubic yards of junk off the street. Public Works maintenance staff getting trained on the use of the new street sweeper, and incidentally, cleaning the public works yard at the same time. Plant operations. Monthly flows of wastewater remain high in March, but began slowing down through the dry period in the middle of the month. Our delicious composting process continues to run well. We will continue to run full speed for a couple more months as we head towards summer and try to bring down the solid levels. This will be critical to get the inventory low, so that sometime in the summer, we can shut down the process while we're working on those programmable logic controller replacements that you've heard so much about for the last six, seven months. Plant maintenance. Three pesky leaks were fixed in the sawdust transmission piping. Two sodium hypochlorate dosing pumps were rebuilt. There was a replacement of an underground sodium hypochlorate feed line. Failed bearings on compost tunnel exhaust fan were fixed, and Tunnel Door B was removed to retrieve sheared bolt. There were many other small preventive maintenance tasks and repairs that were accomplished. Over to Libraryland. This month, staff have continued teaching technology classes at the Shehalem Senior Center. Staff provided help on a variety of tasks like copy paste, using a mouse, transferring files with a thumb drive to a computer, and how to do split screen work for more efficiency. Library staff have tech, tech help appointments during open library hours to help with library-related technology questions, as well as those important basics, setting up email, sending in job applications, and other basic but necessary tasks. Storytimes, which are brilliant, continue this month. Even as staff are prepared for some, preparing for summer reading program, four weekly storytimes teach early literacy skills to those youngest residents and their caregivers. Lego Club builds creative engineering skills in elementary students, while book clubs for all ages build literacy skills. Our newest program, Young Teen Tuesday, provides an opportunity for tweens to volunteer at the library during a supervised program, building some job skills and responsibility. In April, we celebrated Dia de los Ninos, Dia de los Libros, Day of the Child, Day of the Book, for families with food, crafts, and stories of all ages. Finishing up the month, many staff attended the annual Oregon Library Association Conference. Where five library staff and their crumpled city manager presented on a variety of topics and had the opportunity to learn from others, making connections with library folks around the state. Maybe a little crumpled? City Recorder. In April, the City Recorder's office exploded into action, making significant headway on records. Fifty percent of the digital records maintained by our office have now been moved to the Oregon Records Management System, and one hundred percent of all of the old property records have now been digitized. We have begun weekly work sessions with the building department to help them digitize their records and move those also to ORMS. The goal is to digitize the cabinet records, so they don't have to move them back into City Hall. A Records Management one-on-one training was developed, and it was rolled out to all employees. Records coordinators for each department were given an overview of training on public records requests, record management, and ORMS. Staff has been receiving training on Escribe, our new agenda and meeting management platform, and this one will actually work properly. We plan to begin to test that during meetings in May with a go-live date in June. Preparations are underway for the general election in this November, and the website has been updated with information for candidates running for the three positions that will be available this year. Although they say that stability is always a good thing in life. Public Safety News. Vicky successfully completed the DPSST Telecommunications Academy today. Vicky did NuCom and Newburgh Dundee Police Department very proud by finishing the academy with a very high score in her final test. Vicky is one step closer to being finished with her training, and she is doing great. And here is a picture of Vicky graduating from the telecommunications academy. April fourteenth to April twentieth, Newburgh Dundee Police Department joined the country in celebrating National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, a time to honor and recognize those nine-one-one dispatchers who are always the first responders in any crisis. Our NuCom dispatchers are with us around the clock, and they create that vital bridge between our citizens and the help they need while also keeping officers safe. And here's an image of our smashing telecommunications celebrating that week. At TVFNR Station Twenty in Newburgh Six, community members were recognized for saving Mr. Bass. As you know well, the bystanders took turns performing compressions and assisting with applying AED until crews could arrive to provide further care. Battalion Chief Casey applauded their willingness to play key roles in the chain of survival. He said, "We train for these scenarios every day. You do not, and that makes all of you heroes." And here is dispatcher Lindy being recognized by TVFNR. Over to Finance. During the month of April, we've been focused heavily on preparing the budget. By the time you're reading this, you will have received your smashing, amazing budget book in its new and improved format. The city implemented new budgeting software this year to produce a budget book document with huge help from our graphic design specialist Emily. We added photos and other graphics to this budget this year. Please take the time to flip through it if you haven't done so already. And yes, you may find a few typos here or there as usual, but these will be found and fixed before the final copy goes out. Community Development Happenings. The Affordable Housing Commission reviewed and recommended grant award for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Construction Excise Tax. This is tentatively scheduled for council action in July. Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency, CAC, reviewed the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan as part of its work towards developing recommendations for uses of tax increment funds. The Planning Commission received applications and continued public hearings for amendments to the Springbrook Master Plan at Kalina Subdivision and the annexation of nine-one-eight Wainouski. Hearings continued respectively for those two items on May first and May ninth. Enterprise Zone Renewal. Staff are meeting with Newburgh Dundee School District, Yamhill County Assessor, and Yamhill County Economic Development Staff. We reviewed and provided comment to Oregon Department of Transportation on early concepts for the Newburgh Urban Design Verification Study in coordination with Public Works, Engineering Division, Newburgh Dundee Police Department, PGE, and Twalleton Fire and Rescue. Two of the CDD staff attended a two-day Building in Oregon training hosted by the Oregon Economic Development Association to hone further their amazing skills. We hosted two pre-application meetings for review of city-initiated and George Fox University projects. Community Development Director attended the National American Planning Association Conference in Minne, in Minneapolis. We are piloting a new fast-track permitting process for minor residential projects. This is aimed at small decks, sheds, and solar voltake systems with an objective of trying to turn those around within a week's time span. Lastly, the community development featured the Early Bird Rotary on April twenty fifth. Next up, they'll be at the Noon Rotary, July ten. This month in community engagement. Progress on the new city website has continued smoothly, with a lot of work being done behind the scenes to get the new framework up and running. And I must remark that this website is the very last of our internal reforms that were identified in twenty twenty-two. Wow, we're nearly there. CE and Finance collaborated closely in the month of April to develop and push out the city's twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget book. The process was different from previous years with the introduction of the Open Gov Budget Software, which has transparency features to allow the public to view the budget online, see reports, and the data that factor into the numbers in the book. And perhaps just as importantly, this has given us the capability to develop our three-year model, which we are now operating under. Public Works Day is coming up, and with it, the unveiling of the city's new street sweeper. CE is collaborating with Newburgh Public Library and Public Works in the naming process, including public, including social media promotion for voting and designing the wrap that will go on the vehicle. Sadly, the city manager's preferred name of Bertie was rejected out of hand. The next two slides show some of CE's latest design work. National Work Zone Awareness Week. And the gorgeous front cover of the budget. Human Resources News. In the world of HR, we have embarked upon a project to fully digitize the remaining personnel files, aiming to enhance accessibility and efficiency in managing employee records. Additionally, HR has organized and completed another lunch and learn session, this time working with Public Works Operations to educate our employees on the intricacies of the city's water system. Human Resources has also successfully promoted an internal candidate from our IT team to the position of City Technology Manager. Joseph won out against very stiff competition after three rounds of interviews in a competitive recruitment, and it is a testament to our potential for growth within this city. We are looking forward to this candidate's contributions to our team in their new role. So that's it for April events. As you can see, our residents' tax dollars have been very hard at work, as usual. Are there any questions?
Um, just a small one. I, I think it was last year, maybe a little bit before that, where the city was selling compost to residents, but now it sounds like there's a bin and it's there for the taking free. And why the switch there?
The switch was because, and I don't know the dollar amount, the bags that went with that process actually had outstripped in cost the revenue that was coming in from selling the compost. So unless we went to a dump loader system, which would be staff-intensive, we decided the best thing to keep the solids down would be just to give it away.
Are we still charging for loads of it, or is that program gone now?
I'm going to get some specifics from the man who knows best.
Um, when we refer to the free compost, it's very small loads. It's like a, a small, uh, potting soil bag that you might buy at Fred Meyer. We're still selling the, the bulk compost, but the bags that we were doing actually were costing us more, a dollar more to have a bag than we were able to pull in in revenue. So we discontinued that process whatsoever.
Thank you, Russ. And I should comment at this stage in a slight and unexpected twist in the agenda. Elise has something to say.
Mr. Mayor, can I add to the agenda? Our favorite state representative is here today to do an acknowledgement. So if you would entertain me adding to the agenda, Representative Anna Scharf coming to do a presentation. Can I get a second?
I have no problem with that. Wait, did anybody else have any more questions on the item, the agenda item that we're dealing with? I have one, and that is with the Affordable Housing Commission, they met last month. Why is it not coming to us until July?
I believe that's probably connected just to workload, but Scott can know the exact answers.
No, thank you, Manager Worthy. And we recognize that the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendation could be moved forward sooner. So we've asked to have that placed on your agenda for June. The reason for taking more time on the other set of recommendations for CET funds is that we're still awaiting refunds that may be posted, and we want to make sure we're working with an accurate final total amount for that fund. And that'll be in July.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? It's on you, Elise.
Okay, Will. Are you gonna start or me? Come on up here, Representative.
Yes, and, and mash on the button so we can hear everything. And then Elise has something to read out after this brief part.
Hi, Bill.
Taking a picture of you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for allowing me to interrupt your meeting tonight. Um, but I wanted to make a trip over and just acknowledge for, for those of you that didn't know, the award that Bill received last week. And just going to add a little bit of things that I should have said. I was only given a couple of minutes just to do a quick toast. Um, but now I have a microphone, so now I can take, I can take some time. As mayor, and more importantly, as a community member, Bill, I'm only allowed to do that in the legislature, watch it. Uh, Bill collaborates with the residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other government agencies to address the needs and challenges of the city. He also collaborates with other government agencies such as myself, and I'm here to say that that is a valuable thing for me. In the short time that he has, in the short time that he has led as mayor, he has fostered a culture of innovation and accountability within city government and beyond, something I don't see across other portions of our state. Whether it's looking at the construction excise task to stimulate real housing solutions, delicately handling a beloved community tree, working with the public and private sector resources to address our daycare deserts that we have in our area, or looking for ways to find homeless solutions that meet the needs of the most vulnerable of our community while being sensitive to the residents of the neighborhoods surrounding the services. Bill has hit the ground running. He continues to set the pace, and as we just heard a second ago, he continues to ask the hard questions. Bill, I want to thank you for everything that you've done. The award that you received last weekend at Dorchester was well-deserved, and I'm honored to be here tonight to say that in front of your fellow councilman.
Thank you, Anna. That's very nice.
Okay, and then I have, I'm gonna read, um, part of, of the speech by Theodore Roosevelt that I love. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs and comes up short again and again because there is no effort without error or shortcoming. But who knows with, but who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither, who knew neither victory nor defeat."
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of Representative Sharp? Anna, what was the, what is the title of the award that Bill won?
So the title of the award is the, um, it's the award for the Courage in the Arena. It, it's basically for brand-new leaders, um, local leaders, um, who have shown courage, who have led very quickly, um, and who continue to lead despite challenges and, and as the poem alludes to, in a very bipartisan, non-self-serving way. And it's given annually to one person, um, in the state by the Dorchester Conference Committee. And the plaque is still not here. You'll get it.
And I just have to say, um, as a person, um, you know, that has been here pre this council, I just really want to publicly acknowledge and reiterate my admiration, respect of you and our relationship and how you've always, even though I'm a Democrat, sought out my, my opinion and valued me and respected me and greatly, greatly appreciate you as a colleague.
For the record, I would like to thank Anna and Elise for setting us up. But also, I would like to point out that, uh, the other councilors who were elected with me and the ones that sat here before have all been a part of this. And yes, we have been doing some pretty good things, and we are moving as fast as we can to continue to do these things. Um, I can't think of a single decision we've made. Well, the one that I was soundly defeated on, but other than that, I can't think of a single decision that we made that, that I disagreed with. And, uh, I support you guys always, so thank you. All right, we still have no public comments, I'm guessing? So I'm gonna close public comments. And now it's time for council business. So are, uh, the first item on our agenda is a discussion of the Newbury Shelter. Is anybody prepared to lead this discussion? Go ahead.
I can, I can provide some, some background information. And it, it's not complete because obviously we're not sure exactly what's happening at the moment with the shelter. But I can indicate a couple of just background things. First of all, the shelter building itself under Resolution two thousand and four dash two-five-one-nine, which I gave you a copy of, was entered into a lease purchase arrangement with Community Action Agency of Yamhill County, or YCAP, at the location of six fifty North College Street. And the agreement there was that the building would be utilized for the operation of a homeless shelter in perpetuity. So that's just one piece of background information. A second piece of information is just about the city's position vis-à-vis ARPA funds, because that obviously plays into this. Now, I went back and looked at the current reporting record, and actually, the last couple of reports that we needed from YCAP have been filed on time, and they have demonstrated that they did utilize the portion of the money that was dedicated towards motel sheltering. So the dollar amount in question under that MOU, and as usual, thank you, James, for your fine work in crafting our MOU document, was one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for non-congregate motel shelter beds. So that amount has been expended, and there is evidence that that is complete. The other portion that was awarded amongst the total three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for the operation of a navigation center. And as far as we know, although of course the ARPA year is not over yet, because the ARPA performance period runs through the end of the year, the navigation shelter here in Newburgh hasn't opened yet. And we have heard also that it has not opened in McMinnville either. And when this was originally presented to council, these were interlinking projects that would help people find the right kind of shelter that would suit their purpose. That's how it was described to us way back then. So there's some, some baseline information. Also, in terms of occupancy, it would appear that the holdup on people being able to occupy the shelter is street frontage improvements. However, I spoke to planning and building today, and the permissions to allow those street, um, front improvements to occur have been issued. So in other words, the permissions for the buildings they wanted to build in the back of the structure, those have not been issued yet, but the permissions that would allow the actual building itself to be occupied with its bunk beds have been issued, but the street front improvements have not been done yet. And once again, although I don't have all the details, I understand this may be sidewalks, maybe the, one of the main things. So in the form of introduction- So, in the form of introduction, this concludes the factual information that I have about the current state of play with the shelter. And at that juncture, I would like to cede the floor to anyone else who might want to carry out further discussions.
The only thing that I would mention is that, so, Community Wellness Collective, you know, it's been stated and kind of stands true that operations for night sheltering will stop at Northside Community Church come June 30th. That is when our funding for sheltering has been expended. And so unless there's like, you know, funding that flies from the sky, that is June 30th, the last day that we will, that Community Wellness Collective will operate in coordination with Northside Community Church. So, that is of concern as well. So, that's on average right now, about 32 Yamhill County residents.
Did call Chris Chenoweth, because I had chatted with him back before, and the latest update that the City Council in McMinnville had is that their navigation center would not be open in May, but they were aiming for June. However, the building would be done, but it would take them several months to staff it. So, it's unclear at this point. He didn't express optimism, but he was trying to be very tactful and polite. So, it's a similar situation to what we've experienced where the date keeps moving and you don't know why.
We have several things here to talk about. One, I remember the one time that we got into the building with or without permission. There was occupancy notice on the wall as to what the occupancy was of each area. So, that would lead me to believe from my construction work that we had given them occupancy after the remodel. So it seems to me that, I don't know, maybe we should talk to our building department and see if it's possible for them to occupy this building for its intended purpose without using the structures that are gonna be placed in the backyard. It seems that might be a something. So, what we need to decide is, what if? We know that in less than 60 days, this facility is gonna close down and there's now housing our emergency shelter people. So they're currently putting up about 40 people a night. About a dozen of those people are Newburgh residents, people who have lived and grown up here or lived here for an extended period of time or grew up here with us. So, I for one am concerned as to what exactly we're going to do. Robin did reach out to Laverne by email and has not heard back from her, asking her whether or not this was going to be open. We need to discuss our options and certainly we have an attorney on our payroll, who it's probably time to direct him to start acting on our behalf to work with YCAP and find out, find better answers if that's possible. So, the floor is open for somebody else, anybody else's opinions.
It seems to me that the reason YCAP wasn't opening was because they couldn't find staff, but that was months ago. I mean, I drive past there and there's always cars there, so I would imagine they can have people there. So... Why aren't, are they? I reached out to Laverne last week. She normally responds to me right away and I have heard nothing. So...
Um, what's the proposed occupancy of the house? Twenty-two. So, let's say a miracle occurs, that was sarcasm, yes, and the shelter opens. We still have somewhere between, I've been told 32 to 35, and what we have is some families who had a job hearing came and then the job fell through. So, the number's inflated right now and you're right, they're not all from Newburgh, but they are all homeless. And they're working hard to get them places, but the numbers stand pretty constant the last six weeks. It's been 32 to 35 guests. So even if they open the shelter, we have a problem, right? We passed an ordinance that said our public safety would move people out of parks so that our residents could safely enjoy parks so long as we had shelter beds. And that if we didn't have enough shelter beds, we would then work to make a place with toilets and water so that people would have a place to be. So, it seems to me even if they deliver on what they've said, which frankly, I am not optimistic, I mean, if they need someone to operate it, they could sub to Community Wellness Collective. They're doing it today. And so they're obviously not willing to do that, I know that, Elise, but this is, I don't know, this is crazy. And my question to James, after all that rant, is who has standing to actually have a legal discussion with them? Do we? We gave them ARPA money, but I think they performed on part of it. I don't know.
Excuse me, clarification. You mentioned there's an ordinance, is that, can we clarify that? Okay. James?
No, it's fine, Councilor Olson, there's a lot out there right now, obviously, as far as discussion. So, first, for starters, you're right, council did pass a camping ordinance that placed some restrictions on camping in certain public parks and other related spaces. I will, I guess, take a moment to say that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of development going on in that space. One of the things that we're awaiting is the decision from the Supreme Court on the Grants Pass v. Johnson case. We're expecting that in June. June's gonna be an active month, as you can tell. And so that may need to evolve and will, you know, keep council apprised. But as far as with respect to YCAP, you know, with respect to the city's position, we're really dealing with straightforward contract law when it comes to the ARPA funds. So, you know, how is the contract with YCAP as far as their scope of services? You know, this was structured as an MOU, it's not a construction contract between the city and YCAP. It's an MOU dealing with funding. So, you know, I haven't looked at it in quite some time, but I would be shocked if there was a line in the sand as far as completion date or something like that for the renovation, because it was dealing with the funding, not the construction. But that would be the first place we would look, is the contractual obligations that were imposed through that agreement. The other piece that we can look at, if we get that direction from council, is the original transaction with respect to the real property. So I know that, you know, the city manager already referenced the resolution from 2004 that obviously predates everybody that's sitting up here right now, but we can take a look at that. You know, at least with the purchase option, it sounds like arrangement and what the terms were surrounding that and what sort of obligations, if any, that were tied to not only the acquisition, but the potential use of the property. And there may be avenues there, but it will depend on what that arrangement was and the contracts surrounding that arrangement. So those are kind of the two scopes that the city, that I see, at least for the city at this point.
I think important to just add to the conversation, although it is somewhat speculative, is that there seems to be a change of intent of the space. And what has been shared, and, you know, then when conversations directly with YCAP kind of, you know, then they walk back what they had shared and then they pivot again and then that doesn't land, so they walk back. But what has been stated is that they intend to allow sheltering at that site for the individuals that are currently in the motels. Bill asked the question a while back if the motelling program would continue, and that answer was said yes. The latest information that has been shared with me is that it is not going to continue and that those individuals will then be placed in the shelter. Now, if that is to happen, then we are really looking at 30 people that will be unhoused. And, you know, my objective here is, you know, just to have a solution, whether that ends up being a site that is available to individuals to utilize. But I think it's important, and if there's any way that we can collectively put pressure on some sort of communication from YCAP around the intent of the shelter so that we can plan fully, you know, have a solution for these 30 to 35 individuals come June 30th, that's going to behoove us. Because my biggest fear, which I, you know, feel a lot of responsibility for, is that come June 30th, even if that site is open through ADP, we have 30, 35 people that are, you know, unhoused in our city limits. So, that's just kind of my pluck. So, since you guys know you're losing funding, have you been actively searching for places for these people to go? I mean, it may have to be outside of Newburgh or McMinnville, but I know there's, I mean, I know there's lots of other places. Yeah, just for the record, I'm not totally prepared to speak tonight, like, as Community Wellness Collective, but, yeah, I mean, always, there, you know, most of these individuals, we now cooperate, the drop-in center downtown, and so we have staff there during the daytime hours now, which has been super helpful to try to place individuals. But unfortunately, this is the only, this is the only seven-night-a-week shelter in the county. So this, when one person changes, another person enters. So, to your point, if there is no shelter, I don't think that that number will continue to change, right, because there's not an available space for them. But, you know, I think that we do have a number of individuals that we've really struggled to get housed, frankly, anywhere and are from here, and those are the ones that are of my top of mind, really hoping that we can get them plugged into the ADP shelter. So, yeah.
So why can't you find shelter for them? Do they not have jobs? Because there's certainly a lot of jobs available. Why aren't they finding jobs to be able to afford getting into an apartment? We've built all these apartments around here. There's gotta be tons of them still available. Mike, I've gotten to know this particular population. They have a technical term for the dozen or so people that she's referred to. In the industry, they call them hard-to-house. And these people are not probably eligible for anybody's employment at this point. Some of them never will be. Some of them need to, you know, take care of personal demons that they may or may not have, addictions and so forth, before they will ever be employable. So that's really not an option for us to discuss. I'm not sure that Elise made this clear. The problem is not necessarily the lack of a place to be, the problem is the lack of funding. The Yamhill County HHS, I believe, and City of Newburgh helped to extend the emergency shelter for a period of time, and that was up till July, the end of June. Can you tell us about what it costs to run the shelter for six months or a period of time?
It's running $40,000 a month, I can tell you that. But it's a lot less than, you know, I mean, motelling, I'll say if we were to do 30 motel rooms, you double the cost. But, you know, I do, I will say that I do have concern that, you know, we're providing the seven-night-a-week shelter for Yamhill County. I think that's a fair statement at this point, and I do have concern with that. I don't think it's appropriate. I think that there needs to be other options available. They should not all, you know, the only option be to come to Newburgh. I think that that, I've really heard that from people that have differing viewpoints from me. I think that that's actually, I have come to that place too. I think that that's a fair statement. As for not going, as for our funding ending, we have other funding, to be clear. This is, the shelter funding is very specific, and it comes from OHCS, which is Oregon Housing and Community Services primarily, state agency. And that is the lion's share of shelter funding through the state. And it usually is, you know, done through a number of different avenues, but it all comes through that agency. And all of our sheltering dollars for the county are really pooled, we went all in on this concept as a county collectively, every level of government, from city, county, nonprofits, we all went in on navigation shelter. And so for us to have nothing to show for that at this point in the game, I mean, we're two years in to that initial conversation and to have no, nothing, no navigation shelter, no, you know, to me, is very problematic. And I think, you know, there has to be some collective conversation, whether that's with the Newburgh City Council, joining with the McMinnville City Council together, forming a statement to OHCS, like, some sort of collective statement of needing, OHCS is the governing body. They are the body that is, to Molly's earlier question, the really only avenue for us to seek there, their individual nonprofit entity that is governed by their board. So, I hope YCAP is successful. We are all hinging on YCAP being successful. I don't, Community Wellness Collective does not want to continue doing sheltering since all of this money has been put forward. These are our tax dollars that have been put forward to house our houses' population in Yamhill County. They have to do it and they have to be accountable to that. So, I would say, like, if I was making a recommendation for a motion, it would be to craft language and ask if the City of McMinnville Council would want to come in to that statement with us or to the OHCS director, asking for support to get these navigation shelters open because we need them and we need one in McMinnville and Newburgh so that McMinnville residents aren't coming to Newburgh.
So did the shelter that was in McMinnville close down? Because I heard there was one there, so...
There is the mission, which is great. The mission is not open every night, so they have, it's like a 30-day shelter, I believe, and then they have emergency sheltering during inclement weather months. But it's not, it's not open every night. Then there's the Friday night shelter at First Baptist Church in McMinnville, that's Friday nights. So, that's the extent of sheltering in Yamhill County.
Now, thank you for providing us with this resolution. I see on the resolution twice, on the condition that the house property be operated as a homeless shelter in perpetuity. And under Item 2, it again says that we're given a property to be used for YCAP for the operation of a homeless shelter in perpetuity. So it seems to me that we're on pretty solid ground in asking them to make sure that we have a shelter running at that facility as of July 1st. I guess that would be my tack. Now, we have been preparing for some time for the eventuality that this happens, that we have no place for these people to be. And we do, we are working on a particular piece of property that will be a campsite, that will be available so that we can give them a place to be other than our city parks. Hopefully with the Boise decision, that won't be an official thing, it'll be offered that way on a voluntary basis, if they want us to, or they can. But either way, we are trying to, we, I'm speaking for the city manager, he's not really smiling, but I'll keep talking. Our intention is to not have people live in our public areas on the City of Newburgh in tents and so forth. So, I like the idea of asking McMinnville to work with us because they're obviously in the same situation. I'm wondering, you know, should we consider this? James, anybody else? Floor's open. Floor's open.
Okay, um, can you just clarify so that OHCS, you want to partner with McMinnville and ask them? To get, to kind of pressure Y cap to open their shelters? But you don't want more money to operate Northside?
No, I'm not asking for more money to operate.
For Northside?
No.
Okay.
I'm specifically just making a plea that we jointly, or just alone, I'm finding either way. But we, you know, do a formal letter to OHCS director, asking for support for the funding they've already received. Where are they at? We need an answer because they are supposed, you know, they, they audit that money. And they are the ones that are accountable to the millions of dollars that have come through the state. Um, for this shelter navigation. And I, and it's our only mechanism um, to be able to really have accountability um, for Y cap. Yeah, so no, that, this is not about.
So shall we create, create some bullet points as to what we want to say in the letter? Go ahead, Will.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I can connect with the building and planning division. To make sure that the sidewalk that has not been built, to see if there's a way around that. Under an emergency type clause. To grant them occupancy for the number of beds that we know are already there. So as to, to remove that impediment as it were. Um, the buildings in the back is another matter. We, we have to get proper approvals to build buildings that are new buildings. You know, we have to do that, right? So that's the first thought. The second thought I had of course is that. If, if it is the will of council, then I will move ahead and start setting up the temporary campsite. To allow for this eventuality. It wouldn't take long to do it. And we've already got the quotes in place from when we did the research previously. And I can move ahead and get that done very quickly.
So beyond our, I mean, James, what have you hearing us say, what do you think that we could effectively? State to them that might get them to get off the ball?
Well, I, I think that um. As an initial matter, you know, the, the communication that Councilor Daniel Hallman brought up. Potentially going to, to OHCS, you know. Um, with the City of McMinnville, City Council or not, you know, that's, that's certainly an approach council can take. Um, I would imagine, but council can decide this, that there would be some sort of formal. Um, documented communication to, to Y cap as well. Um, expecting or anticipating their, their response or giving them an ability to formally respond as well. Um, this is me just kind of off the top of my head, but even a formal invitation um, to Y cap. To provide an update and, and share where they are with the navigation center. That's certainly something. Um, councils issued those formal invites in other contexts and that can certainly apply here. So I think that any sort of communication, um, if council wants to do that, uh, is something that uh, can be crafted. Probably by the city, not to create more work for the city manager, but uh, likely from the city manager. Um. Mr. Mayor, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, you know, other content that may be in that letter about um. Um, further incentivizing Y cap to respond and to be active and, and doing what they committed to do when they received the funding. I think that that can look a, a few different ways depending on, uh, you know, there's certainly the ARPA funds. They were, they were dispersed, they received them. There's an expectation of completion. I think that having a um. Um, a call for even the demand for completion, but, but within a certain timeframe is something that, that, that the city could do. Uh, there may be other um, pieces tied to the original acquisition of the property. Uh, uh, but my office would have to, to look into that, um, if council would like us to.
I, I like everything I've heard so far. Does anybody else have anything they want to add or? So just so that uh, just so that it's clear, let's take a vote real quick as to uh. We would like the city manager to work with the city attorney to uh, provide a letter to Y cap. Uh, on these matters. All in favor signify by raising your hand. It is unanimous. Great, thank you.
Second.
Okay.
A second.
Well, that was, okay, so we have a, a second, Molly?
I'll, I'll say so moved and someone else seconded and that will take care of Rachel's concern.
Second. Alright, so let's vote one more time. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Thank you.
And did we also, did we also want to prepare? She's got eagle eyes. Did we also want to prepare a communication to someone, talk to City of McMinnville? City manager and the last would be to um, prepare a request to the funding agency for status. If Y cap is reporting status to them as the funding agency, perhaps they could share that status with us.
And so. First thing, on the first letter, I'm going to see if, once we've checked for bullet points. If Mac is willing to join with us in the same letter. We'll try that. And then the second part, being, meaning the letter to the funding agency. And my honored colleague suggests that perhaps we should do a motion in that regard as well. To ask for that.
Should, should we also include the uh, board of directors to Y cap or does that go without saying?
So I'd like to make a motion that we craft a communication to the Y cap executive director and staff. As well as the Y cap board. Requesting that they provide. An update on. The use of the ARPA funds and the opening of the shelter in Newburgh. Did I leave anything out? By June thirtieth. Is there a second?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same side. It is unanimous. Mike, go ahead.
So do we want to, as a council, do we want to follow up with what Will suggested that? Maybe we start preparing for a site? I think, I think we should. Cause I sure don't want anybody out on our parks camping out, so. I think we should. If the council feels that way, I think we, we should go ahead and move forward with that.
I'll second that motion. There was a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's the responsible thing for us to do to have a place that is specified then and safe. And you know, for people to come in the case, the worst case scenario that there isn't somewhere, so I, I support it.
Do we have a motion or a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same side. Alright. You have your marching orders. Next, we have a much more mundane task, capital improvements project update. Excuse me, uh, Paul, if you'll bear with us, uh. Elise needs to make a, a phone call and it has been an hour or so. This would be a good time to take a break. Can we take about five, seven minutes and we'll be right back. Thank you. Alright, we have no idea how long Elise is going to need for her phone call, so let's go ahead and resume the meeting. Paul, floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Paul Chu, senior engineer at the City of Newburgh Public Works Engineering. I'm here to present you the capital improvement project. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So as I presented, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to ask. Alright. The first one is the Public Works Maintenance Yard. It's a multi-year, multi-funded uh, project to provide a fully functional public works facility. For critical city response. So far, we have completed landscaping, security fencing and the fueling station. Work that is in progress would be these items for the building and the lighting upgrades. And we also need to have a cover storage for equipment. And there will be pavement repair because there are pavement surfaces at the Public Works Maintenance Yard. Uh, we also need to have vehicle and equipment washed down. So that they're in very nice and cleaned uh, situation. Uh, we also have to have a dumpster ramp. And this whole um. Project would uh, be about twenty percent STC eligible. And uh, it's budgeted for about hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from several funds. The next one I'm going to talk about is the fund number six for wastewater projects. And the fund is for planning, design, inspection and management of CIP projects. It included ru, design reviews, inspections of public improvements. That are necessary uh, and required on private development projects. This fund also provides routine maintenance. Such as pipe cleaning, video inspections, root and obstruction removal. Manhole repairs, pipelining and replacement. This wastewater uh, fund also uh, provides pre-treatment inspections. Of grease traps, interceptors. And FOG, that's fat, oil and grease. That's the short for that. And this fund is in alignment with the council goal. Uh, to have wastewater infrastructure in good repairs and functioned. And uh, when we have emergency situation, that it would be uh, very functional and operational. Talking about a little bit more detail on this uh, projects. Uh, this one that I'm talking about is the inflow and infiltration short for INI project. So inflow is pretty much due to inappropriate pipe connections to the system. Infiltration is due to damage and aging pipes and joints. So that's why it's called INI project. The goals of the project is to reduce the system maintenance cost. To reduce the INI that goes into the system and therefore lower the operating cost. So one of the intention is also to delay any capacity um, improvements. We have been doing this INI project for a number of years. And uh, there has been evidence indicating that we have reduced INI by as much as one-third of it. So especially during this wet seasons and things like that. Um, this INI uh, project is determined to be fifty percent STC eligible. And is budgeted for just a little bit over a million dollar. The next one is the Hess Creek Sewer Man Erosion Stabilization Project. We have pretty much along Hess Creek. Uh, sewer trunk line running all the way north of uh. George Fox and going down all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. So some of it's on the river, river bank and things like that, so it creeps across. And there are some lines that's crossing the creek as well. The area that we are focusing on is uh, from the Hess Creek ward on the north. To the highway ninety-nine W or Poland Road uh, to the south. So we need to repair and reduce bank area erosion that has happened over time. So we need to fix it. If we don't take care of it, uh, it, it could uh, expose this pipe that we have in there. And could threaten catastrophic pipe and manhole section failures. And we don't want to have that because it's a trunk line and there are lots of sewer in it. And this work uh, is going to be managed by the Public Works Maintenance. This uh, project is not STC eligible and is budgeted for two hundred thousand. Oh yes, please, uh, on that one, yes.
Yeah, um, can you explain a little bit more so on the Hess Creek one? You said if it's unabated exposing and threatening catastro, catastrophic pipe. Are you saying that if the earth erodes and exposes the pipe, what, what will happen?
Yes, uh, basically, uh, there's a requirement that all this pipe to be buried underground and things like that. So you have this uh, area that is covering the pipes and also surrounding uh, the manholes. And so we don't want to be in a situation where the pipe is exposed because the, or whatever on top of it is being washed away. Or unstabilized due to erosion and that sort of natural events. And so we want to make sure there's uh, there are evidence of uh, erosion. We want to take care of it so that we don't reach that point.
Okay, okay, but it don't, won't affect the pipe, the stuff going through the pipe? It's more just the land?
Uh, yes, eventually the worst case situation, you could have a pipe exposed and you can see that. Um, I'm not sure if I can give you an illustration, uh, which is not a sewer. Uh, there was a storm pipe uh, a number of years ago. On North College Street, on the west side of it, we have open dishes. And then we have this storm pipe, uh, and then, uh, and then it's back to open dish and then storm pipe again. And that uh, storm pipe is actually sitting right on the, uh, not in the middle of the, of the drainage ditch. But it's on the, uh, on one side of it. And I have witnessed personally that uh, the dirt that is covering the pipe has been washed away. And I can actually see the pipe itself, but that one is a storm drainage pipe. It certainly is not a good thing to see. So I just want to sort of, if you saw of an example, uh, if it's a sewer pipe, oh no. We don't want to get to that point there, because sewer is uh, is much more uh, something that we want to take care of. Yes, Amal.
Maybe, maybe, maybe I can help you out a little, Paul.
Sure.
Uh, Russ? The majority of that sewer trunk line that follows Hess Creek paralleles, parallels the creek and it's very close to the creek. The, the base of the creek is four to six feet below the sewer pipe, the bottom of the sewer pipe. And as uh, over the years, it's eroded the side bank, so it used to be ten feet from the edge of the creek. It's now actually one foot from the edge of the creek. It's, as you know, streams move when they erode. And so what it's starting to do is erode under the pipe, which makes no suspension for it whatsoever. Uh, under there and should that happen, the pipe will fail. And the sewage, everything north of that would dump directly into the creek. So uh, the problem is it's eroding under the, the pipe and removing all the subs. Uh, substrate for it that's supporting that pipe and keeping it from failing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it is the dirt that's keeping it in place so it stays together? That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, let me move on to the next one. Um, as you have heard about this uh, PLC project. We have um. We have. The PLC that has been installed in the late nineteen nineties and has reached its end of life. And then the parts are no longer manufactured and produced. And we're just using something from a third-party. And their production may stop at any time, but we don't want to wait for that situation. And the PLC project has been completely designed and was advertised. And by the way, I can give you a little bit update on that one there. We received three bids as of thirtieth of last month. Of the three bids, they are two non-responsive. And so we, I have been working with city manager and also city attorney. And it's for the good, as I look into the things, I wrote a recommendation. That this project needs to be re-advertised and rebid. So that we can have more competition in there. And so I also have an opportunity because all these bidders, the three of them. Because I reached out to them and with a memo saying that we are going to rebid this project and they have some questions. So I personally have actually talked to each one of them today. So they understand the whole situation and I continue to encourage them to submit a bid. So I'll be working myself and also with the consultant HDR. To repackage the bid because there are some of the dates and some of the. Bid addendum, I need to sort of merge it into the bid package. And then re-advertise it at the DJC and things like that. And I plan to shorten the, the period from advertising to bid closing. Because this is something that has been out in the market before. And so we'll go through that process and the delay would be maybe one to two months. From what I would like to see happening, but this is just a matter of fact. So we just do as timely as we can on this project. So that's a bit of update for you, yes, any questions?
Just. When, when you can't get bids back, sometimes it's because what you expect is not. Available in the industry, did we get feedback that would allow you to modify it to make it more bidable?
No, it's, the question is not about the equipment, because we have pre-purchased the equipment. So everything is good, we just need to have contractors follow the rules. And then there are, there are bids that are non-responsive. They missed something here or there and therefore they can, then we have to sort of disregard their bid. And so it boils down to just one. And so instead of three bids, they are perfectly responsive and responsible. So we can look at their numbers and make a determination. So in other words, I will come back to this, to you, council, for the bid award. After I go through that rebid process, so just a bit of information. Have I answered you, Counselor Olson?
Yeah, so it's, it's not for equipment, it's for the programming?
No, it's actually for the, the procedure. See, when they submit a bid, they are required to, for instance, there's one contractor forgot to provide a bid bond. It's a requirement when they submit a bid. So when you don't have that one there, I have to throw out that bid. Yeah, my.
I'm asking a different question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
No, that's okay, I understand, they didn't meet the requirements of the bid process, but.
Correct, but that's why I'm answering that question.
Yeah, they, what is it they're supplying? You've got the equipment, you've got.
Because they also have to look into the, because the conduits are very.
The work, what work is being put out to bid?
Is installation, there's electrical work, there's a lot of electrical work for that one there. So they have to have lots of certified electrician to provide that construction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one. Okay, lift station. The lift station maintenance, okay, the city has eight lift stations. And there are minor improvements that are required. For Charles, Shehalem, Creekside, Fernwood, Highway two forty, and Sheraton Lift Stations. So these improvements will be managed by the Public Works Operations. And they include adding safety grading to the valve bolts. Installing ballots to protect, for traffic protection. Some additional fencing for the stations. And we need to repaint the building doors and things like that. And also the heater and heat tap for freeze protection. Because when we have a deep freeze and when we get to that situation, it's not good for the system. So this project has been determined to be about one percent STC eligible and budgeted for two hundred thousand dollars. Okay, yes. Counselor Wheatley?
Thank you, can you explain what we're looking at here, it looks like a house.
Yes, this is actually a lift station just south of. Newburg, I mean, the City Hall, that way.
I can, I can help you out, Paul, that's Charles Street Lift Station and that is a house.
Yes.
The city owns the property that the lift station's on right in front of it. And the house was built behind the list, the edge of the lift station.
So someone lives there?
Someone lives there, yes.
Okay, what's the, what's the, the gray thing or the green?
The, the gray thing, it's all underground. So the, the gray thing you see behind the yellow markings is actually the hatch. To open up to go into the wet well that the, the sewage flows into. All of our pumps are in wet, on wet side, so they're submersibles. And the controls are in the panel right there, we have to block the street. Because we cannot get into the lift station because they will park several vehicles in and around it. So, so that we can't access it. And one of the things he's talking about is some of the safety, the bollards to prevent vehicle parking. Safety grading, fencing, you know, for the, the citizens' protection as well as the lift station. But yeah, that's a, that's a house right, right behind it.
So those upright, those have the electronic things that I'm seeing above ground?
Yes.
There's a green thing and a, okay.
That's, that has the electronics, the control, the PLC for the control of the, of the lift station is in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Do you contract this or is this work that Public Works will do?
All, all of the site improvements is going to be done by the operations staff.
Yeah.
Very, very little of it would be contracted.
The next one is the compost bin improvement. At the existing wastewater treatment plant where there's an area for the public to dump their sewer from RVs and things like that. As you see in that picture there. George Fox students have done their design as some of their senior projects. And they are working on that one there. And so the project is pretty, pretty much going to have a designated small compost bin area. Where Newburg residents can get free compost for their home gardening needs, needs. That way, at, you know, get in and out and that sort of thing. And the facility, the design will be reviewed by Public Works Engineering for approval and things like that. So this project is not STC eligible and it's budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars. Yes.
You said it's a compost bin, but it's.
So it's, it's an area. Where it's contained so that the compost material is. Contained inside the bin area so that residents or any one of us can drive by there. And then take some of the compost, they can use their pickup or something, whatever, you know, or maybe a bucket or, or things like that.
How did it get there?
How do they get there, they can drive through there on Wanuski Road.
So, oh, okay, 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 I see, so that's our waste. Oh, okay, this is the stuff that we're giving away.
Yes, yes, we are giving away, so we built something in there. So you see the two concrete area, it's a driveways that they can get in and out that way. And so it will be situated somewhere there at the right location. Does it make sense?
How were we doing it before, why do we need this?
We don't have anything before that, because that. We don't have anything that is for people to come and get their free compost and things like that. They purchase it and that sort of thing, you know.
Remember, they said they were bagging it, but that cost a dollar more than.
Yes.
Okay, so they, the city.
Now you're gonna pull up there with your pickup and shovel it into the backyard.
Yes, that's right.
The, the, this is also to prevent them from coming into the industrial area. To do that and, and have people walking around with a shovel or a bucket. That's out there, which is kind of what's going on now. It will provide it twenty-four-seven outside the fence so they can easily drive right to it. One of the other requirements by DEQ is the runoff from rain. We have to capture it, so that's the majority of the design work and construction.
Okay, right. The next one is stormwater projects using the Fund Six. Again, is for planning, design, inspection, management of CIP projects. And. It also provides a design review and inspection of public improvements necessary. For private development projects. Again, it include. Routine maintenance on the system, like pipe cleaning, video inspections, root and obstruction removal. And manhole cleaning and things of that sort. And this funding is in alignment with the council goals. To have storm infrastructure and good repair and integrate it with emergency management for the community. One of the projects. Would be when we do this payment projects at TUF and things like that. We have this underground storm system. That aging or old or maybe leaking or something of that sort. We have to go in there and address them and repair them. Or put new ones, whatever necessary. For instance, replace broken, damaged, and aging or undersized pipes. Or sometimes the inlet is, there's not an adequate drainage situation. So we have to address those using this fund, this, through this project here. So then, once it's all done, then they will allow us to do some payment project. Which would be at a later time so that we don't have a new paved area. And then with the pipe that needs to be fixed and dig out the new pavement. So that is contrary to a good stewardship and use of money. Okay, so that's pretty much what it is, it's budgeted for two hundred thousand dollars. The next one is in the Frank Current. Storm Improvement Project around that area. You know, the Oregon two forty and the railroad track area. And. There are situations where there has been some drainage failure on the system. And the goals of this project is to. Investigate further. And map out the extent of the local flooding. And then provide mitigation and fixing it, whatever necessary, so that these problems are resolved. So pipes needs to be adequately sized, replaced, and or relocated. So depending on where they are, so we, we need to take care of that one there. And what we have is a twenty percent STC eligible and budgeted for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. The next one is Eight Hundred Block Wanuski Stormwater Outfall, that's Phase One. We have this. Storm system that has outfall on the east side of Wanuski Street. And the outfall area has been severely eroded. And needs to be fixed. And this Phase One construction that has been designed a couple of years ago. Will extend the outfall further down the hill, the slope. So that we can address the erosion problem. And also by doing this project will reduce the erosion situation. And you can see a couple of pictures in there. You see the erosion that is kind of a, sort of the right-hand side. You can see sort of the pipes sticking out a little bit that way. So this project is not STC eligible, it's budgeted for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. I also have an update for you for this project that we have advertised this one for construction bid today. So by my colleague Fatim. And so I will go through that bid process and, and get, receive bids. And ever, if everything goes well, then we'll have more updates for you at a later time. Keep going, the next one. Will be the Springbrook Road Storm Improvement Project. Flooding impacts areas south of Springbrook and Pressview Roundabout. Because of flow constriction. For thirty-inch storm pipe. That is connected to an eight-inch and a twelve-inch pipe further south. The goals of this project is to perform an initial drainage investigation. Produce conceptual design options with appropriate pipe sizing, upsizing. And obviously, we have to upsize the pipes along North Springbrook Road. And eventually have the system reconnected to the storm system further south. The plan is to have a full design in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And construction would be in the fiscal year after that. This project will be twenty-five percent STC eligible. And budgeted initially for two hundred thousand dollars. So that we can sort of. Take care of this problem here. The next one is the Stormwater Master Plan Update. The City Municipal Code thirteen point twenty point zero thirty. Requires Stormwater Master Plan Update every five years. Our current Stormwater Master Plan included the riverfront area was last updated in twenty twenty-one. So that is means it's about time to do an update for this Stormwater Master Plan. We start budgeting now for an update to kick off in fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And intend to have this update be completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. And future budget will fund the remaining master plan update cost. The final master plan will require council adoption. And once it's done, the project will also identify new storm projects if necessary for future. And this would be fifty percent S T C eligible and budgeted initially for hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Alright. You have no questions? I will continue for the next one, which is Fund Eighteen. Transportation Street Capital Projects. Again, is very similar to other funds for planning, uh design. Inspection and management of C I P projects. It also cover design review inspections of public improvements that are required on private developments. It will provide routine maintenance and improvements, including pavement and sidewalk ramps. And this fund aligns with council goals to have transportation infrastructure and good repair. Because we want to attract employees, employers and enhance mobility. And accessibility. And also public safety for the community. I guess we also attract employees as well, because when you have employers wanting to hire employees. Then it's all for the good of the community. The next one, it would be the red light uh speed camera enforcement project. That has been in motion. ODOT approved the red right running and also the speed enforcement at two. Um, state intersection main and veer road. And this project is driven by traffic safety. Based on crash data, crash potential, observed violations. And also to reinforce good driving behavior. So we don't want uh crazy drivers, I guess, uh driving through town. And so this will help. And the evaluation and the construction will be in accordance with the ODOT red light running camera guidelines. So at this point in time. Uh, we are focusing on the veer road intersection at uh College, at Portland Road. Uh, the one at Main Street. Uh, we'll also be working on that one there, uh because ODOT has some. Uh, uh concern about the signal boxes and things like that, so. Was staff and also uh city manager and my colleagues, they are working with ODOT to. Sort of resolve that situation, so it's coming along. And we're, I know that uh we is also um taking the lead to get this program. Publicized so that everyone in town and know about it. So that it's actually part of the requirement uh by ODOT. So that uh people know about this project and that sort of thing. And this uh project is ten percent S T C eligible and budgeted for hundred thousand dollars. So after the red light running and speed is uh in uh. Is implemented, uh then uh we'll be able to figure out a little bit more about the cost factors. And then uh also any kind of cost control and that sort of thing. And city will see a scope reduction or cost control and things like that for budget uh in future here. The next one is on the College Street uh by lane and sidewalk project. We have uh just not too long ago, last year, provided uh waterline improvements along College Street. That one, that project that we have been doing is in anticipation of the ODOT by lane and sidewalk project that is coming. So. This project. Uh, I, I can tell you that North College is a critical pedestrian and bike route. According to the two thousand seven pedestrian and bike route improvement plans. So it's kind of a master plan that was done uh that time. We have an intergovernmental agreement I G A that puts ODOT in the driver's seat. And that I G A obligates the city to provide a matching fund. And we have to monitor it very closely to make sure we don't. Uh, see any over budget situation or over co- construction cost overrun. Because this one, as I said, ODOT is in the driver's seat. They control their contractor, they control the money, even though we have provided a matching fund of a little bit over ten percent. And so we want to be uh very mindful of what's going on there. ODOT completed the design in twenty twenty-three and delayed the construction. Uh, I, I think it's due to poor planning and also there's a seasonal restriction on tree removal. Because uh there are a couple of trees that were removed. And the project has to observe the federal migratory bird protection. Things like that, so trees can only be removed at certain time of the year. And that was done by ODOT's contractor uh a number of months ago. So. Uh, this project will be moving into construction. And then my colleague uh, uh Brad will be interacting with them. Uh, to make sure things are running smoothly. Uh, we have ten percent S T C eligibility and budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars. And we're certainly want to seek scope reduction or cost control. To make sure that uh ODOT doesn't run crazy on this one here. Because uh, a number of years ago, they have a situation where they're uh running crazy. Like it's really uh an unpleasant situation. Yes, uh, Cons- Councilor Whitney?
Ki- thank you. Can you explain the, the matching fund? So ODOT plans it and we have to pay for it? Or we pay for half or what?
No.
You explain that a little?
Okay, yeah, a- absolutely. The matching fund is that ODOT will pay a certain amount. Uh, X dollars and that's based on this I G A. The city has to pay ten point two. Three or ten point two seven, somewhere around there, approximately, just a little bit over ten percent of the money. So it's that money, we have to have contribution to ODOT. So, and then they take that one in there, they put their money, so this is the total money for the project. For the design and the construction of the project. So it's that kind of arrangement. So. Have I answered your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next one is the A D A R A M improvements. Um. When we do payment projects, especially reconstruction or overlay and things like that. We are required to address the A D A ramps along that uh street, whatever streets we have chosen. Uh, so this project is allowed us to address the A D A ramps ahead of time. So for instance, this picture, you can see uh there's a curve in there, there's no ramp. And then you see all these broken things and you see the pavement is not in good shape. So this project will allow us to put in the ramps. Uh, on those streets that we plan to have pavement uh project coming with, you know, immediately after that. So it provides upgrade to existing sidewalk ramps to meet current A D A requirements. Yes.
How many of those can you fix for, for one fifty?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. That is a good question. Based on my past experiences, uh each ramp could run. Um, you know, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars is amazing. Is, and then the costs, I cannot guarantee because. It is, the prices are kind of pretty much up to the market. And where I have seen a lot of ups and very little down. On that one there. So it's, it's something on that sort. So pretty much uh we just have to see how, when, and sometimes it could be. Maybe we are fortunate uh at a certain time and contractors are hungry. They want to fill their plate and do a few more projects and then uh hopefully that would be the case. So. Right. Have I answered your question? Okay. So this uh will be funded by the turf money. It's not S T C eligible, it's budgeted for a hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, the payment maintenance program tough, okay, that's where the meat is. So we have approximately seventy-two miles of paved uh city streets. Uh, that varies from poor to good conditions. The overall payment condition index, which is a measure of the condition of the payment itself, or short for P C I. Uh, in twenty twenty, we have seventy-one. The overall P C I is this declining, is projected to be around sixty-eight uh this year. And you may ask, why is it? Because we're not catching up. This takes a lot of money. And if we don't have sufficient tough money and things like that, we're falling behind each year. And then the P C I will continue to drop, uh talking about the overall for the city. So as you can see that we dropped three points from twenty twenty to, I mean twenty, twenty twenty-four here. So um I have identified a couple of streets, uh like South River, Willamette and McDonough. That may receive a maintenance after clearing utility conflicts and payment. We have to investigate the payment. Earlier on at this uh council meeting, I also heard uh, uh, the fact that uh the city will go out there and. Get a survey of the worst uh number of city streets and things like that. And also patrol will be looking to that, and so the engineering also have some. Something looking to that, so we want to be very comprehensive. And then once we go through that exercise, then we're able to identify, yes, indeed. We have public involvements in there, that felt a bit of ownership about, you know, spending, paying for the tough money. And then we'll come to uh a decision eventually, okay, what streets we need to do and how much it will cost and all this stuff. And one thing I want to mention, just uh for your information, is that. Streets that are beyond repair totally have to re- reconstruct, just like last year we have Boucher Street. Uh, that one, we have to dig out everything and redo it, it's very expensive. And then there's also a street, uh, it would done yeah, uh George Hawkes area. Uh, still somewhat savable and we just uh. Remove some of the, the bad pavement and we use the cement amendment to treat it and tilt it. And this is actually a picture of it. And then we, this is a little bit la- uh less expensive, but still uh needs a lot of funding on that one. Another one would be sort of when we have streets that are in reasonable, good things. We just need to do some crack seal and service seal that way, so just keep it from falling apart. You know, so there are a lot of different treatments. They all have a different cost for that one there. But uh for this one here, as I mentioned, uh we have budgeted uh for two million dollars. So we intend to uh do more if we can, you know, that's, that's what we are heading in that direction. Alright, and let's see. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. The next one is Fund Seven for Water Projects. Again, is for planning, design, inspection, management of C I P projects. Include design review inspections of any public improvements required on private developments. We have to monitor the water use, do water sampling, testing to meet regulatory standards and requirement. Uh, we have to regulate the water production to meet demand and fire flow uh needs. Uh, and then we also have to provide the media readings for finance to do the utility billing. So the funding is pretty much aligned with the council goals to have water infrastructure and good repair. Needing regulatory standards for production, supply, demand and storage. For fire flow and emergency needs. And one of the projects that we need to do, which Oregon Health Authority has imposed on the city. Is that they require us to provide protective cover over the water treatment plant filters. To keep them from airborne contamination. Uh, I guess such as the bird poop or so whatever that might be falling into it. So um I have a picture here just for illustration. So this is not S T C eligible and we have budgeted it uh for five hundred thousand dollars. So this is something that uh we are required to do to meet the requirement. Okay, the next one is the House Bill two thousand one water program. It's a unfunded state mandate. That we have to improve the water system to comply with H B two thousand one, made of housing requirements. Uh, the River Street Waterline Project that was done just a year or so ago. Was actually part of this uh requirement here. So we have upsized several pipes and then got new ones in there. So that we can uh meet the requirement. So it's multi-phase to upsize several pipes south of the downtown New Bull area. To provide adequate fire flow and also flow velocity inside the pipe. All this uh identified projects, as you can see in that illustration, that is sort of the red color lines. Those are areas where the water line in those, along those streets or under those streets. Uh, must be completed by July of twenty twenty-nine. And this project is fifty percent S T C eligible and budgeted for two point two million dollars. The next one. Is the Oak Knoll Booster Pump Station Improvement Project. This is a booster pump that is in the Oak Knoll subdivision area. I- if you look at it, it's right next to single family housing and things like that. It's somewhat similar to the uh lift station that uh, that we have talked about. Like, oh, how come there's a pump station, a lift station next to it? So that is one that was built uh as part of those uh development and. It boosts the water pressure so that those areas have sufficient water pressure on it. So um. We need to do that, uh, it's part of the planned improvements to boost the water pressure and conveyance. In the northern part of the city. Uh, the generator electrical service uh require up-sizing. Uh, to accommodate the proposed uh booster improvements. This project will allow new developments in areas at a higher elevation than that served by the current water system. Because that area, as you see, they are at a much higher elevation, so. We need to make sure we have enough pressure to push the water and supply it and also for the fire requirements. This uh project is not S T C eligible, it's budgeted for three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there will be budget review once the improvement cost is available, so. Once we go uh, uh more into it, then we'll have to know what the cost impact, impact would be. So once we go more into it, then we'll have to know what the cost impact would be. So we will be looking into that. And the next one is the seismic resiliency for cast water, a cast iron and concrete pipe for Ford. Because the city has a lot of aging water conveyance pipeline that require replacement. And some of the pipes are substandard or seismically constructed of weaker pipe materials such as cast iron. And they need to be replaced with a stronger ductile iron pipe for the water distribution. Funding for this project may be used to support the HB Two Thousand One projects that I have presented earlier on. Because we have to do pipe investigation and determination. So this project is eleven percent SDC eligible. It's budgeted for three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Actually, there's a little change, also a couple of hundred dollars right in there. So I just want to point that out. Okay. So this is what we have for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five CIP projects.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah. And
Anybody have any questions for Paul?
Yes, please. Okay. If, if not, thank you for your time. Appreciate that.
That's Scott is our update on the sequential growth boundary project.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Scott Siegel, Community Development Director. And joining me is James Tingwell, Assistant Planner, the Community Development Department. This evening, we'll be providing a high-level overview of our work under Task One of the Sequential Urban Growth Boundary Amendment process that the council last heard from us on January sixteenth, I believe. And at that time, you provided direction for the staff to proceed with the work which we have. We've since received a response, positive response from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the state agency that oversees this work. And they've approved our work program, which you've heard previously. Mr. Tingwell will discuss sort of the general approach, how this aligns with your council goals and, and high-level data. So in your council report and your request for council action, you received an executive summary. There's a lot of technical work. We have an approach and a thought process around how we might address any questions that come out of this work session. But most importantly, this is a work session and it's an opportunity for you to become even more familiar with the work than you are now. Because we'll be going to a public hearing later this month. And consistent with the council policy, we're bringing this to you in a work session prior to legislative hearing. Although this would be the second time the city has adopted or approved the work that James will be going over this evening. And there's some technical reasons for why we're bringing this back to you. In fact, we're required by the state to go through this process and ask you to formally adopt the land needs studies that are before you. So just a little bit on the process there that I wanted to cover. There is no action requested tonight. If you have questions that are more technical in nature than we're prepared to address. We do have our consultant on call, ready to assist. And we would bring those technical questions to them, Echo Northwest, and then report back to you for the public hearing. Although we'll do our best to answer any questions that you have this evening. So with that, I'll hand it over to James to present.
All right. Good evening, councilors. Today, we're going to take that high-level look of the documents, which is also in the executive summary, which is a mid-level look at the low level in the documents themselves. Did I go the wrong way? There we go. We'll see. So, and then As Scott mentioned, in addition to tonight's discussion, we will have the consultant to answer questions. And then I believe they are also planning to attend virtually at the second public hearing in June. So have a couple of opportunities to get questions to them and then ask any follow-ups with them as well. So as you've heard in other presentations, the sequential UGB work falls under two council goals. Primarily goal two, identifying industrial land and attracting employers to encourage community jobs. Objectives one and two, identifying land other than the mill site, does it relate manufacturing? And working to bring land into the UGB to zone, flight manufacturing within five years. And then goal seven, increasing for housing, specifically objective two, working to bring land into the UGB for residential purposes within five years. So this is the first step in that sequential review process. As Scott mentioned, the Department of Land Conservation and Development Director approved the city's work plan on April ninth. So this first task includes adopting the analysis of land supply and demand for housing, employment, and public needs. Because the city completed these analyses, the documents already, we are proposing to adopt them all in one go. And once that task is approved by DLCD, the city may then move on to tasks two and three, which are evaluating efficiency measures, looking at land that's already in the boundary to see if we can make it more useful. And then finally, a possible UGB amendment. Once this task one is adopted and approved by DLCD, that starts a four-year clock that can be extended one year. But so once we get this one through, that kind of starts the clock on finishing that possible UGB amendment itself. So a little bit of background, the updated housing needs analysis was funded by a grant from DLCD and completed and accepted by council in twenty nineteen. Updates were made to include new population forecasts and a middle housing allocation in twenty twenty-one. The economic opportunities analysis, also funded in part by a DLCD grant, was accepted in twenty twenty-one as well. The public and semi-public land needs analysis accepted, was accepted by the council also in twenty twenty-one. And then the council initiated a comprehensive plan text amendment to incorporate these analysis documents in twenty twenty-two, which this hearing process is a continuation of that twenty twenty-two initiation. Planning Commission recommended adoption of that comprehensive plan text amendment, which is what you will be considering possibly in the next few hearings. The ballpark approximate costs of these reports and grants were about seventy thousand dollars, of which twenty thousand was paid for by those DLCD grants. So taking that ten thousand-foot look at the analysis results, starting with the housing needs analysis. It's a document that is made up of a buildable lands inventory, a summary of development trends and demographic factors which will affect residential development. An analysis of the projected housing need and then the sufficiency of Newburgh's residential land to support that need. The HNA uses a projection that Newburgh's population will grow by just under eight thousand residents between twenty twenty-one and twenty forty-one. The planning period for all three documents to just over thirty-three thousand residents. The buildable land inventory looks at developed, partially vacant, public, unbuiltable or vacant lands and shows that the majority of that available residential land in the city is largely up north, largely in that Springbrook area. The analysis converts that available land into dwelling unit capacity and demand across different zoning types. So Newburgh's capacity from the analysis is approximately like thirty-three hundred dwelling units and forecasts the demand of just over three thousand units. But this analysis, this allocation does not evenly split across the zoning districts. Low and medium density land provides a surplus of units while the high-density land shows a deficit. And you might see that the Springbrook and Northwest side of the plan areas show a specific portion of that forecasted supply and demand, which doesn't get brought across to that sufficiency column. And that's because the Springbrook and Northwest use the master plan figures as opposed to this analysis of forecasts. So when adding in other land uses in that bottom table there. So employment uses public and semi-public or land for group quarters like dorms. Both the medium and high-density land will show a deficit over that twenty-year planning period, holding about twenty, seventy-eight acres. Moving on to the economic opportunities analysis, similarly, it looks at factors affecting future economic growth, projected employment growth and site needs, and employment lands, buildable lands inventory, and the sufficiency of the city's land to support that growth. The EOA projects just under forty-five hundred new employees broken into industrial, retail, commercial, office and commercial services, and government sectors. The EOA identifies potential target industries for Newburgh's growth to include advanced and general manufacturing, technology and high-tech manufacturing, food and beverage production and agricultural products, and aviation-related industries. The site needs analysis also looks at Newburgh's site availability that could be suited towards those target sectors compared with other comparable cities in the Willamette Valley to project the site needs for the city. The employment buildable lands inventory indicates that the available employment lands are again primarily east Newburgh with some availability up north and proximity to Springbrook and then some, also with some infill potential along ninety-nine. The EOA looks at this land capacity for commercial versus industrial land. And it identifies a surplus of twenty-one acres for commercial itself. But then when looking at the industrial need, the EOA identifies sites by size using that comparative analysis of peer cities to identify what site needs might support those growth industries. And so to support that growth, the city would need to see sites in all of those smaller categories, a total of ninety-six individual sites or one hundred and fifty-two industrial acres. And then finally, the public, I mean, public land analysis looks at the public land needs across the city. So municipal, city, county, and state, parks, school uses, and also semi-public, so churches, nonprofits, uses like that. And to summarize, these particular needs are distributed across the zoning districts as well, total hundred and twenty point five acres. So overall, the analysis documents indicate that the city may need seventy-eight acres of medium and high-density residential land, hundred and fifty-two acres of industrial land, and one hundred and twenty and a half acres of public and semi-public land. The next steps for task one will be public hearings. Can it be scheduled for the next two city council meetings on May twentieth and June third? And that's all I have. So we're happy to answer any questions.
As I remember, when we were looking over the some of these, the housing needs analysis, we, we had some specific questions about their recommended strategies. We didn't necessarily agree with some of the strategies that they have. Would we have an opportunity to look at those again, or is this going to come back to its initial form?
Well, I, I think so. You'll see in the appendix to the HNA, there is a long list of those strategies and then recommendations from the technical advisory committee on what they thought the city should do. The housing production strategy is a separate document. And so this HNA only looks at the land need and supply. And then task two, which is efficiency measures, will kind of look at some of those strategies and think, how can they impact the existing land? But this task one is just the, more of the math itself for the land.
So when it comes to the housing needs analysis, will we have an opportunity to talk about those? Or are they going to be used the same form that we accepted them in?
I think kind of this is the, you know, I think the forum that we're hoping that you guys, if there are any questions or new conversation to have and then kind of bring it forward to the next meetings, I, I think we have been limit, kind of been limited in the analysis part of it. And I think, you know, thinking in part that future work will look at those strategies as opposed to kind of the math that the consultant did using some state, kind of state safe harbors or other techniques.
Yeah, I think that's right. What, just to add on to what James is saying, this first task is really about metrics and numbers and acres and numbers of employees and population growth. The next phase, the efficiency measures is more qualitative and it's looking at policy tools. And I think that's where you'll have, that's where I think the heavy lifting is going to be, honestly. Because I think that's where we need to reconcile our need with the different tools that the state says that we must consider. Doesn't mean that we must adopt all those tools, but we have to look at them. We have to prioritize. You have to prioritize and make policy judgments around that before we can go to the third step, which is to look at alternatives and land, looking at different land scenarios.
And kind of one more thing that if, if there are certain, you know, methodology or kind of technical pieces that you guys have questions on. We would kind of hope that some of the summaries kind of helped break it down a little bit. But then this is the point where we can talk with the consultant and kind of go through and, and help kind of break down the methodology and the why of some of the assumptions they made of kind of the choices they made while they did the math between now and when it gets adopted.
I'm gonna, I I wasn't sure you got a clear answer, so I'm going to do that thing I do sometimes. Now, we will have time later to look at those strategies. This, this is not that. This is simply the numbers. But there will be time in task two to address the concerns the mayor was raising. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. And we did, and Mayor, I did want to assure you that we went back through the record in the last time this council or a council reviewed the documents. And we were attuned to the Paul, the, the issues or the sensitivity that the council had. What we found was that in the, in the land needs reports that are before you or will be coming before you, we didn't find any sensitivity in, in that language. Yeah.
Thank you. Very thorough.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is to appoint Jose Villapando to the Planning Commission. Do we have a, we don't have a request for council action on this?
There is a request for a motion and it doesn't require a signature, so I did not print it out for you, but there should be one in there. But if you'd like me to.
Of course there is.
I did receive an email from an employee about an hour before this meeting started. And they wanted you to know that the request for council action says that the two openings on Planning Commission and the one student opening, so three total. The two main member openings were from resignations. The student opening was just the end of a term. She wanted to clarify that detail for you guys. So but there are two opening, there are two regular member openings and a student opening. And the mayor has appointed Jose Villapando to, Villapando to fill one of those openings. There's still one more opening and a student opening.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Jose Villan, Villalpondo, how do you say it? Villapondo to planning commission.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same side. Thank you. Now the surplus property resolution.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and councilors. You have before you a resolution declaring the Butler property surplus. Staff recommends the council make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Three Nine Two Five to declare the Butler property surplus. The city owns unused real property at four eleven East First Street, Newburgh, Oregon. Property is no longer used for city business. Property is no longer used for city business and has not been for several years and must be declared surplus in order to enter into a disposition process. I would mention that the fiscal impact of this potentially could net the city several hundred thousands of dollars towards its debt reduction plans. It also relates directly to Council Goal Six, Objective One, to begin and eventually eliminate the city's debt in a steady and prudent way without compromising the city's ability to provide essential services and functions. And this is the end of my initial statement.
So this is simply the motion to declare surplus property. Anybody want to? Peggy.
I move to approve Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty four thirty-nine twenty-five, declaring the Butler property as surplus.
Second.
I'd have been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion, Mike?
So Will, can I have some clarification on this? By us declaring this as surplus, we are not putting ourselves in a position that if we decided maybe the time isn't right, I don't have a problem with selling this. But I, but I do have a concern that maybe the timing isn't quite right. And if we waited and maybe next year, interest rates are down, we get a better, could get more people involved in it or something. I guess what I'm trying to say is, does this hamper us in any way to maybe being able to pull back if we, as a council, felt that way, not just me, but if the rest of the council felt that way at some point in time?
So by declaring the property to be available, you're not binding yourself to accept any certain offer. And in fact, it is the hope of this city manager that many wonderful offers may emerge from this process.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. All right. Now the, the actual measure as to what we want to do with the property. I'm sure you've all read over the two options. So we have option one, language for motion one, which will allow us to accept the offer contingent and give, what, six weeks? Four, six weeks, in which other local agencies and established nonprofits will be made aware the property is on the market. I'm assuming that we're, that is going to allow us to get competing offers for that. And then motion number two is essentially the same thing, but would have a wider marketing period with a maximum budget of ten thousand dollars. So any discussion on those two items, Mike?
So if we were to pick motion number two, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, how would we spend ten thousand dollars? I mean, it seems like we wouldn't have to spend a lot of money for marketing. We could just get a hold of, you know, we could just get a hold of several realtors that deal in commercial property and let them know, and that wouldn't cost us anything.
If you desire to not run an extensive advertising campaign, you would choose the first option. And we will most assuredly make sure realtors of the right type around the region get to know about this. Whereas option B would be going in and running some advertising, some web marketing, Oregonian ads, stuff that costs money.
Okay, so that's, that's really the only difference between the two, it seems then?
Yes, sir.
It seems that if we adopted the first option and we got no requests, we could always, again, come back and say, maybe we should market it. So it seems like doing the first one first makes sense. So therefore, I guess, I'd like to move. Now I have to get the wording right, damn. I move that staff immediately will begin to negotiate based on offer A at the price of two five seven comma five zero zero or the assessed value. No final contract will be entered into for at least six weeks in which other local agencies and established nonprofits will be made aware that the property is on the market.
Second.
I heard Peggy say second. So as far as any more discussion, this doesn't obligate us to accept that deal. So I say this is a pretty good way to go, in my opinion. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Does anybody else have any more business they want to bring up today? All right, the meeting's adjourned.